Thank you.
This is outside.
Probably on the phone. All right, it's six o'clock. Monday, March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five, regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council roll call.
Joseph Jones.
Here.
Michael Libby.
Sure.
Did get a message from Lauren, she'll maybe on later. Lisa said that it's outside.
We have a quorum, so we will proceed. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider the republic which stands on a nation under God, universal, liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda.
Check.
Roll call.
Susan Skirrius, Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Item three, presentation from Westcom.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, for giving me the opportunity to present our second annual report from Westcom. Waiting for it. He's he's working on it. I can assure you, it is much shorter than last year. Okay. Next slide, please. So our accomplishments in two thousand and twenty four, next.
Chief, is the microphone, is the red red dot on there?
It should be. Yeah, it's here.
Thank you.
Guess I just not in front of me. There we go. Uh, we did an upgrade to our nine one one telephone system. Uh, our computer aided dispatch system, which are now both in the latest versions. Uh, two years ago, we were about three to four versions behind. Uh, we've remedied that, so we are now within one version. Uh, of the the latest cutting edge. And where our goal is to stay within two versions at all times. We also completed a police record management system rehost. We moved it from the physical environment to our our virtual environment. Uh, it went very successful with minor, minor things. Next, please. We, in the final testing of the CAD to CAD project, you've probably heard parts and pieces of that through the last three to four years. CAD to CAD hub is basically a little black box that the three piece apps, Des Moines, Oak County, and us invested in. And it allows disparaging computer systems to talk and share information. So once this is finished, right now, if I if I was to show you the screen, I can see all of Pope County units moving around. I can see all the Des Moines units and they can see all of us. And then this is just for good situational awareness and in case of a disaster or emergency, right? Especially Windsor Heights, right on the edge here. If if there's a closer unit and both police fire on this side, agree with the police fire on that side, we can pull those units across the line and to help and assist. Closer unit response is what they call it, and we're working through that. We've also started the conversation with Department of Public Safety who wants to join Warren County and Dallas County. So we'll get to Metro Plus. So yeah, it's all about sharing. Next slide. How well did we do this year? Next. Fifty nine thousand nine one one calls. Uh, eighty six percent of those were wireless, which is about the national average. Uh, we had a hundred and thirteen thousand administrative calls. Uh, those come in the ten digit line, anything from alarm calls to people want to know when you can shoot fireworks, when you can't, you know, there's a pothole in the road. Two hundred and sixty five text messages, which is about average for our last five years. Uh, and we created from that a hundred and seventy two computer incidents for the police and fire EMS to respond. Um, so about average. The biggest thing is what we call queries and entries. This is behind the scenes. Uh, police knows it well. This is where we run license plates. People uh find history, what they're wanted or want, or if they're if they're violent and all the other stuff. A hundred and forty eight thousand of those were made. The big part is seven hundred and ninety three thousand responses, which means my people have to go through every page. You may send a query in for David R. Smith, and you may get two hundred pages. So, um, the police are very good about giving names, middle initial, date of birth, uh, which shortens the the list and helps our thing. Uh, what that does is we average eight hundred and eighty actions per day in which my telecommunications have to physically interact. Uh, are about thirty seven actions per hour in a twenty four hour day. Ninety two percent of those calls, this is the good part, that's why it's highlighted in yellow. Uh, we answer nine one one calls in less than ten seconds, ninety two percent of the time. And you say, well, what does that mean? Since he's clicking ahead of me, what it means is the national average, we have to perform or we're expected to perform ninety percent within fifteen seconds. We do it at ninety eight percent. Uh, ninety five percent of all calls in twenty seconds. We do that at ninety nine percent. We set the bar higher, we do it better. Next slide. We also continue education. Um, we conducted seven hundred and six hours of individual education during our academies last year. Fourteen hundred and sixty four hours per telecommunicator of continuing on the job training and twenty six hundred hours of continuing education to keep their certifications, accreditations, and all of that stuff current. Uh, on the left, we also participate in across the metro and our partnering cities in their citizens academies. We're proud to say we've had three graduates from Waukees, think two from West Des Moines and and others. On the right, just is we hold the in service twice a year where we just basically talk to our team about what you likes, what you dislikes, anything we need to touch on. Uh, this year, me and the logistics chief, we just sat down with one slide. Ask the chief, that's all we did. And and talked for a half hour. Next slide. This is this is my, one of my babies this year, uh, language translation. Twenty eight thousand times we translated this year in two thousand and twenty four. The highest seventy five percent of that being Spanish, which is not bad. We contract this language line. So whenever we need it, we call the number, they connect us with a translator who we connect on the call. And when the officers in the field need something, we'll transfer them out to their cell phones and do this. Um, why I say it's of interest to me, when I got here two years ago, this cost was twenty four thousand a year. It is now fifty four thousand a year. So we are looking at cutting edge technology to change this. We're going AI translation, voice, immediate voice translation, text translation to try to improve this process. Next slide. We also had seventeen lifesaving awards this year. Lifesaving award is basically when our people give instructions over the phone uh, on CPR, on choking, on birthing babies, things like that before the ambulance arrives or the police officer arrives. Uh, we did that seventeen times this year. This is just a snapshot of a few of our people receiving their awards. Next. We also do outreach. Please, anytime you have a community event, reach out to us. Uh, we have a good group of volunteers that love to go out and talk about Westcom and who we are and what we are and what we can do and hand out all kinds of goodies for the kids. Next slide. We had one retirement last year, Mr. Cuddy Michaels in the upper right. Um, been with us over twenty years. One third of my staff has been with us over twenty years. I have one, it's been there twenty seven years. Uh, the rest are hovering at twenty two. So that is something that's very proud to be part of because in my thirty year career, I rarely see anybody make it past the five or six year point. They just don't stay or survive. Uh, along with that, our our association, who's always doing outreach and other things, decided to hold a retiree luncheon. Because the thing about Westcom is we have a group of eight retirees that are still alive and well in the metro. So they decide to celebrate starting an annual retiree luncheon every year to bring them in and show them all the new things and talk about the old times. Uh, and it went very well, and we'll repeat that this year. Next slide, please. What's the future of Westcom? This is something I launched this month. In August of two thousand and twenty six, we will be in existence for twenty five years. Uh, and I think that's something to celebrate. But part of that process is what I call the reimagine campaign. We are going to look at Westcom and turn over every stone, everything we do and say, okay, is this still the way we want to do it? Is this the most efficient, best way to do it? Or can we improve on the process? Uh, so next, please. Uh, reimagine, we're creating a new image, you know? Those of you in in city government know who Westcom is. Those that have had to dial nine one one know who Westcom is. But if you walk out here on the street and just ask people, they don't know who you are. Even his police officer challenged me out in the parking lot a minute ago because I'm parked in the emergency vehicle site. You know, so who are we? Next, please. What is the mental picture of Westcom? What does that mean? Who and what we are next? What is the new concept of Westcom? You have tightening budgets, which means I have a tightening budget. All of the cities tighten, I have to tighten my budget and look at ways to do things more efficient, more better. Uh, in December last year, we started our reimagine process as far as the budget's concerned. We saved fifty seven thousand dollars in one month just by looking at way we're doing stuff, challenging our vendors to say, why, why, why am I paying for this? What what is the value added I get for this? And if their answer was no, we deleted it that quick. And we're continuing to do that process uh with everything that we do. Next. How can we do things in a new and creative way? You know? We've been doing it so like twenty five years, it's time to change. Imagine a new identity, who and what we are, branding. So to give you an idea of why, artificial intelligence, if I just ask everybody in the room what it is, do you really know? Do you know it's been in existence for over ten years? It's not something new, even though it's new in the social media, it's new in the news and everything. It's not new, it's been here for quite a long time. Next, in two thousand and twenty one, there was a poll taken about, okay, do you believe AI is real? Only forty percent of the public believed it. Thirty four percent said eh, we'll wait and see. Next, two thousand and twenty three. Now we're up to forty eight percent say, hey, you know, this is something that's coming. And twenty four percent are still on the edge. In two thousand and twenty five, it's now up to fifty six percent. We've broken the fifty percent mark. But yet in the undecideds, you're at eighty some odd percent. It's here. We need to embrace it. It has a lot of uses, you just need to be, as we're going to be, very careful about it. But it has a lot of things to help be more efficient, more effective in how you work and how you process. Or in my case, trying to keep my people from answering eight hundred and eighty calls per day. Next slide. Uh, we did have one tragedy last year. We lost one of our veterans, eighteen years in service, got killed in a motorcycle accident. Uh, so we celebrated uh his loss last year and we're dedicating this year's National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week celebration to him and his family. Next slide. That's it, ladies and gentlemen, unless you have questions.
Yep, chief.
Yes, sir.
Last year, well, thanks for coming in and giving the update. Last time you came, you talked about some of your telecommunications being bilingual. And I know you've mentioned the the language issue up here. Has that number changed at all, or have you?
Yeah, I I I had five bilingual.
Yeah.
Uh, unfortunately, four of them have moved on. So I'm down to one.
Wow.
Uh, so we never were able to launch that solution.
Yeah.
Um, also working through HR and that process. So now we're going to look at technology to to help aid that process. Because it, to tell you, three months ago, when I looked at AI translation, the only thing they had available was text. If you called and you spoke a foreign language, Arabic, German, whatever, and I recognized it was a language, the only thing I can do is send you a text message and it would send it in your language and you can translate and we can go back and forth. Uh, as of last week, that is now all these companies that are pushing the nine one one world have gone to voice translation, automatic. They call nine one one, it rings, it automatically translates to English to me. When I type English, it transmitted back to your language. I tested it last week in Vietnamese. It worked flawlessly. Uh, then I threw him a curve and did Arabic. That worked quite well. Arabic's a real tough language, but it worked. So we're we're really happy to see the technology making such great strides. And so that's the path we're going to go down.
Thanks. Chief, what's your biggest pain point?
Our biggest pain point is retention of employees. As I shared with you earlier, in February first, and Adam knows this, we were eight short. Uh, we ran a recruitment starting last November. Uh, we had sixty seven applicants, but after the vetting process and testing and oral boards, that got down to twenty eight. Uh, we made job offers to six. Five showed up. Um, and the rest, when we call them back, are not available, are not interested anymore. So we started another recruitment on Thursday. Uh, we did have start those five in mid February. So it left us three short. As of Friday, I had one walk in my office, said he's moving to Nevada. Another one walked in and said they've accepted a job at Department of Public Safety. So we're back to now being five short again.
And at the same time, you've got several people that have been there.
Yeah.
Long period.
The core, the core group is solid.
Yeah.
I mean, fifteen years or more, it's just trying to hold on to this new generation of employees. I know.
I hear it from every business across the United States.
And and the last two that that, not this two, but the ones in February that resigned was just the fact that they saw every six months, we rotate shifts and they were going off days to swings.
Hmm.
And they said, no. But we advertise twenty four seven, we preach it, we document it, we make them take a paper home to their family to read all the things. You're going to miss birthdays, anniversaries, all this stuff. And have the family sign it. We talk about it in the oral interviews. But when you're in training, you stay on days like dominantly. So you're there for about four to six months and then you fall into the rotation. Just hasn't worked. We're just going to keep doing what we what we're changing up on this class as we start a mentoring program. Uh, we got volunteer mentors uh all five years or more seniority. And we paired them up with each of the new employees. Um, and have pretty solid rules that you have to communicate with them no less than once a week. Once a month, they have to generate a report on what activities they've done, what questions they're having and accomplishing. Uh, we're going to throw a graduation party from the academy. Academy, seven weeks long. So we're going to throw a family graduation party and have them bring all their family in and give them the tour and welcome to Westcom and everything. Try to just embrace them better, you know, encourage them that, hey, we're here, we're here to help, we're here to make you succeed. Help us help you.
Are they working shifts similar to police and fire?
Uh, no, right now, our telecommunications work five days on, three days off, I mean, two days off, sorry. Uh, our supervisors work four ten hour days and three days off. The ultimate goal I've had since I got here was to move the PSTs, which is the twenty nine of them to the ten hour workday, four and threes. Uh, but to do that, I need twenty nine of them there all time. And so that's difficult when we're losing people. Uh, we're looking, right now, we're studying, trying to come up with creative ways to do it. Uh, but I think getting them out of there three days a week is would be a great benefit to their family, work balance, lifestyle.
Shift work is hard, you know, and on your families, you miss a lot of
Yeah.
time. I understand that completely. And sometimes people walk in and think it's okay, and then they get in, they start that shift and either two to ten or, you know, ten to six, eleven to seven, whatever. And they figure out, my wife, my husband doesn't really appreciate this. So
Yeah.
Um, we definitely appreciate that Westcom has come out to a lot of our special events. So appreciate that. We always have a a long line of people that lots of children um wanting to to talk. And I've heard really great things about the the volunteers or the staff that you have there. So appreciate that. Um, one question, and maybe I missed this. Um, you you will adding AI, will that help reduce the cost for your translations?
Yeah.
Since it was at fifty eight thousand.
Absolutely. Everything we're doing right now is about reducing costs without losing manpower or staffing and without, number one, of course, reducing our quality of delivery of service. That's our number one, all the is everything. Uh, but trying to be more efficient, more more wise, the fiscal dollar. You're getting squeezed, like I said earlier, and I'm getting squeezed. So we have to look at ways to do things better or identify, hey, why are we paying for this? Are we using it? The fire department uh earlier last year identified a program that they were using that they introduced several years ago, cost eight thousand dollars a year. But the statistics for the last three years showed the usage was less than three percent from the public. So we got rid of it. Simple as that.
I actually did like that program, and I heard from a lot of residents that liked that program.
Yeah.
So I definitely, I mean, I understand the cost reducing
Yeah.
um, aspect of it, but um, so, but thank you for looking at ways to maintain the service and the quality of the service as well as trying to reduce the costs.
Thank you. As I challenged you last year, come visit us either as a group, individuals, your children, your family. We give tours all the time and we welcome them to to show them where we're at in the little dungeon in the basement and who we are and what we are. Last year, Urbandale was the only one took us up on it. But, uh, yeah, you're welcome to come anytime. Just give us a call and we'll schedule it. Doesn't matter, weekends, holidays, because we're there.
So chief, thanks for being here and I really appreciate what you and your team do for us and being a part of the the larger Westcom family, if you will. So appreciated all your comments, particularly on workforce shortage. Um, you know, we hear from every industry, but I know it's that there's a lot of components that come into it with the work that you guys do each and every day, particularly when it comes to mental health and the traumas that really your staff have to your endure each and every day when those calls come in, because this can be really compounding. And so, um, you know, Godspeed to your crew for for what they do and and handling those traumatic situations when they do, when they do come in. Um, impressed with the kind of the translation on demand. That's something actually before you said it, that was going through my head because I've got another client who has transitioned to that as well. And it seems to be, especially when there's such a workforce shortage, you got to figure out how do we, how do we still get it done? So um, that's that's really awesome. I think one of the things that is, um, especially recruitment and retention, um, it sounds like you're really trying to be innovative in that space is um really embracing nine one one as part of the whole public safety community, right? And that's not always necessarily seen as um that you guys are, you're really, you're the first, you're the first call, right? When somebody needs help, you, nine one one is is the first call to service. And um, so that's one of the things that I just really appreciate what what you guys, you know, in my eyes, you guys are, you guys are the first call to public safety. Um, and even though you might not see you out on the street, um, in that, you know, direct um, response um space, you are, you're generally still on that call. You're still assisting and aiding that family, that whatever that is. So I guess I call out to thank you for being the first line of service in the our public safety community and the work that you guys do and um just really challenge everybody else to think about our nine one one dispatchers and community as that is, they really are in that space. So kudos to you, thanks for for what you do every day and your team too, because I know it's, it takes a village and you guys have a strong village.
Yeah, that that's where the man or staffing shortage has really hurt us. My people, I've been working twelve hour shifts on an average since November. Uh, because we also took about a COVID in November, which knocked out a third of our staff. So the sooner we can get people trained and up and running, then we can start seeing backing off twelve hours and possibly getting them to ten and threes and but every day is a challenge.
Yeah.
Like one step at a time.
Well, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Item four, public hearing on zoning code amendment of chapter one seventy five. Motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skirrius.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Lisa Harms.
Yes.
AJ.
Fill in for Trey on this one this evening. Uh, this is a fairly straightforward amendment. Uh, we do not currently allow projecting signs, so those would be signs that stick out from the building uh in our mixed use districts, so the UC district all along University Avenue. The topic came up as part of a conversation with the Windsor, who is interested in putting a projecting sign at the corner of Sixty Third and University Avenue. It is fairly standard practice across the metro to have projecting signs in walkable areas. Uh, they're usually fairly aesthetically pleasing signs. Um, they're also fairly expensive signs typically. They help with folks that are walking down a trail or a sidewalk, see the business that they're walking towards, or in this case, the apartment complex. Uh, so I don't have any objections to allowing projecting signs uh in the UC district. Uh, so the language here would add a little bit of clarification to how projecting signs are measured as far as distance above that parking lot, driveway or sidewalk. Uh, that's the section one there, and then it would change the table one seventy five point zero nine to allow projecting signs in the UC district. Uh, the request from the Windsor is uh to move this forward as quickly as possible. So uh council can consider whether they'd like to waive the second or third reading. Uh, but they are looking to begin fabrication and design of this as well as install the brackets as part of the facade uh that would allow for the installation of this sign. So uh, nothing to say they can't do that pending the second and third reading, but uh clarification for them uh on whether the sign would be allowed as soon as possible as their their general request. Happy to answer any questions?
So I see it, uh, was it voted four to one? What what's the person who voted against it? What was their reasoning?
Unfortunately, I wasn't at the plan and zoning meeting, uh, meeting Bob voted against it, if I recall correctly. Uh, his concerns. Testing my memory here, I read. I don't know that often. Give me a minute, I can dig it up in the minutes probably though.
So I would move to approve for the first reading and then maybe we can come back after we understand or know. Can we, or do you want to, do we want to come back to it at the end? What is your preference, Mr. Mayor?
Well, we're in the public hearing.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I can move it.
Well, yeah, um, let's, let's, while are we done, um, if we can, is there any public comment? Or um, see, there's some people online. If you can find the minutes or you cannot, AJ.
Give me one moment here.
Our next meeting, the first week of April.
April seventh.
Just contemplating doing the first reading now and then second and third at the next, just because might give people some time if there is other
I agree with that.
Comment.
That's fine, I'll bring back the, I'll bring back the the comments from P and Z at the next uh agenda for clarification.
Right, so I move to close the public hearing. Alright, so I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Lisa Harms.
Yes.
Alright, for a consideration of the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty five oh one.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Uh, further discussion or questions? Hearing non-roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Lisa Harms.
Yes.
Alright. Uh, public forum. This is a time set aside for comments on the, from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to no more than five minutes. Public comment. Alright, consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Lisa Harms.
Yes.
Uh, seven A, consideration of sixty fourth street and sunset parking and pedestrian crossing. Uh, AJ.
Yeah, I'll start off with a little bit of history on this intersection. It's been the top of the conversation a couple of times in the last seven or eight years. Uh, we've had a couple of residents express some concern about uh, children's safety, particularly during pickup and drop out, drop off hours at school there just to the north of Sunset and sixty fourth in particular. Uh, staff did go out and meet with school administration as well as engineering, just to talk about their perspective. Uh, as they've got a crossing guard kind of north of here typically out there. We also have PD out there, Pete, probably what eighty, ninety percent of the time when schools letting out thereabouts, a lot of the time. Uh, so we gathered a few more, a few perspectives on there, looked through the history, uh, twenty eighteen thereabouts. The sidewalk was installed on sixty fourth street about corresponding with that was a study done by Bolton and Mink. Looking at not just this intersection, but sixty third and some of the adjoining intersections as well. There's some recommendations off of that uh, study, including switching the sides of the street that parking was on up against where uh, the sidewalk was. It also looked at a, a moment in time, I believe it was January ninth or thereabouts on twenty eighteen. Um, what traffic counts were at the sunset and sixty fourth intersection uh, to whether, to determine whether or not they would recommend that the merits are met for a four way stop there. Uh, that study again, which was just a one day study, um, didn't come close to any of those merits. They didn't recommend, recommend a four way stop at that time. Uh, in twenty nineteen, there was a addition done to the school. I'm not sure exactly what that all entailed or if that increased enrollment and would have changed traffic patterns. Uh, Bolton and Mink says that the typical traffic patterns post COVID are down a little bit. Uh, so there's probably some fluctuation for that school addition. Uh, suspecting that might have increased enrollment, uh, but the general trends on traffic have declined slightly. Twenty twenty one, former Public Works Director Dalton Jacobson did a memo to council on Jacobus. Thank you. Did a memo to council regarding some no parking signs that would be at this intersection, specifically the north, east and south side that would prohibit parking during those school pickup and drop off hours. Uh, there's a few other conversations that took part as uh, in that memo as well, but the three no parking signs were placed shortly thereafter. Uh, and then get to present day where we've visited the school, uh, heard some resident feedback about continued concerns here. Uh, the recommendations coming out of the school administration meeting were painting a sidewalk uh, both on this intersection and the intersection to the south uh, which Public Works has indicated uh, they're receptive to doing. Uh, and then we also explored a few different options, such as a flip up, flip down stop sign uh, that the school could manage during those peak times at this intersection. There was some concern that the inconsistency of there being a four way stop there could mislead people or, or lead to more problems than it might solve. We also looked at installing no left hand turns um, from some of these uh, streets such as Sunset onto sixty third to try to back up uh, to stop the backing up of traffic. If you recall, there was recently council action to install no parking on the north side of Sunset uh, directly adjacent to sixty third. That'll stop cars from parking there. And when you have somebody at the stop sign, um, trying to get on to sixty third going northbound. And at the same time have somebody going southbound on sixty third, they'd get sort of stuck and block traffic uh, all the way up sixty third since there's not room for three vehicles to pass easily simultaneously on Sunset. Uh, hold off on any recommendation on that. Uh, but then the final one was to look at putting in some additional signage here for the pedestrian crossing. Uh, we did look into just the typical pedestrian crossing signs, which would be placed directly east of the sidewalk as well as some flashing signs that could be programmed to flash during specific times. Those flashing signs would be about two to three thousand dollars to install. They're solar paneled ones, batteries last about four or five years. Uh, program through Bluetooth. Uh, so it seemed like a fairly inexpensive option, uh, if we wanted to put a little bit more uh, focus on this pedestrian crosswalk. The general issue we have here is that the school is pulling enrollment from all across the metro. So you don't have a lot of kids that are walking, although there certainly are some kids that are in Windsor Heights that do walk back and forth between the school. Uh, but you've got parents that kind of go through the traffic lane for pickup uh, in the parking lot. You have other parents that don't like to wait in the kind of queue there. So instead they'll park on Sunset or sixty four street and have their kids walk down to uh, where their car is parked. Uh, as we've added some of these no parking signs over the years, some of that's growing a little bit further away. So you have kids walking a little bit further. Of course, now have a sidewalk at least one side of sixty four street. Uh, but sometimes if the parents are parked on the west side of sixty fourth and Sunset, they might be crossing the street uh, kind of just south of that driveway where there is no particular crossing. Uh, and so those visibility uh, corridors on that intersection have been, I think, part of folks concerned. If you get a car parked right up against that intersection, uh, kids crossing and they're trying to turn, a car is trying to turn, you can't really see that kid necessarily just because that vehicle is obstructing that view. So you have a lot of things happening here. Uh, the school was really never designed, I think, for the amount of parents that come pick up, drop off kids uh, there today. Uh, you also have police out there frequently with the presence uh, doing enforcement or at least talking to parents, I think, as they're sitting in their cars if they're parked in these no parking zones. Uh, but you've got new enrollment happening every year. And so there's always a re-education campaign that happens as new parents come, as new kids come, uh, trying to adjust habits as those uh, school years start and stop. So I don't know that there's a silver bolt on this, uh, but staff recommendation here today is that we go ahead and move forward with painting those two crosswalks uh, in place at least some pedestrian uh, signage on sixty fourth and Sunset. Uh, I think the, the flashing lights is, is a fairly easy thing to do. So I, I'm in favor of those, but you can just go with a typical sign as well uh, with a minimal cost. Uh, I see Andy's online. He was part of those meetings as well as Justin. Uh, Police Chief Roth has been engaged in a lot of the conversations as well. So staff's happy to answer any questions council might have. And I believe there may be some members of the audience uh, interested in this topic as well.
Is the principal here from there?
He attended our meeting. He's not in this meeting.
Would have been nice for him to be here so we could ask questions of, or she um, asked questions on how the school is going to also handle this since it the, the problem is really fifteen minutes out of the day.
One suggestion um, that our, our PD offered to him and he was very receptive to was a, a weekly email that he sends out uh, reminding folks with a map or some sort of a visual of where parking is and is not allowed. Uh, and that police will be out there writing citations uh, if you are parked inappropriately. So I think messaging to the parents is part of what the school can assist with. Uh, we did talk about the logistics of flipping the sign up and down since they do have a crossing guard there. They used to be, I think, kind of the, the walking bus uh, at one point, but I think that tapered off a number of years ago. Uh, but I think logistically, they thought the easiest thing to do is just add some additional signage. Uh, when we were out there that day, uh, we didn't see traffic backing up too much. Um, but that again was just one window in time, I guess, uh, when staff was all out there. So.
Can we avoid leading communication with, we're going to give you a ticket?
Honestly, though, there have been so many warnings and they blocked my driveway. They blocked the neighbor's driveway. They park in the no parking. I mean, it's frustrating and I, I definitely have the messages and emails from residents on the street that, you know, how about Kohl's be a good neighbor, you know, we're, we're now shoveling sidewalks. We're doing this stuff to be good neighbors. And yet we, we don't always get the, the same response. No.
Well, I think part, oh, go ahead. No, 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 I didn't mean to interrupt. I'm sorry.
I think that part of the problem that I see, and I know that I talked with Chief McCluskey about this, and I still think this is something that we need to do at sixty fourth and Sunset as you're heading west, there's that fence line. And that needs to have no parking because everybody parks, even with the no parking sign. They still park right there. And so nobody can see. So if, if we remove and make everybody leave that intersection open, then your line of sight will be a lot better. Um, I, I think that's one option or one thing that we need to look at doing. And I, I don't remember the reasoning behind why that wasn't added when we did the other three sides, because we did the three sides. We just didn't do that one side. And so now they just park right up at that intersection.
And apologies, that is in the staff recommendation to add that fourth side of the intersection as no parking during those peak hours. We'd place the same signage at the same distance on the west hand. I'm not sure why that sign was not added. There's no crosswalk or sidewalk right there, but clearly what's been communicated to me is that some kids have parents parking over there and
They do.
that is the issue.
There's lots of kids that park or parents that park their kids because they're driving. Um, there's a lot of, I mean, there's probably five cars, the same amount of cars that are on sixty fourth on a daily basis.
So a couple of thoughts is one, it sounds like there's some unintended consequences from our last activity. I tried to right size this, right? Um, I can't remember, and I don't know if you know this and what you looked up, but when did, when did we um, when did they, when did Kohl's move from a, to one only to a community radius school? Do we know when that happened? What year was that?
I was hoping somebody here might know.
It was quite a few years ago.
I felt like, was it like twenty nineteen?
It was way, it was before that because I'd heard people complain that they live in Windsor Heights and they still weren't able to attend um, because of the
Because
Well, I know when I came on, so that would have been in twenty fifteen, that it was not. And so I do know, but I know before COVID it was. So I know sometime between twenty fifteen and twenty twenty, that's when it happened. So
Went to not a neighborhood school or?
No, that it went to and back to a neighborhood school, like if you lived within the radius.
I don't, I don't know, because there's still a lot of people that aren't able in Windsor Heights to get into Kohl's.
I'm pretty sure that the communication came out from this, from the, that if you live with, I think it's within so many blocks, maybe it's a ten block radius.
Principal, I'm not sure about the exact radius, but I know there is a very
There is a radius. Yeah, yeah. But I feel like that changed like in twenty nineteen. Like that was added back in. Anyways, may not be that important. My point is that you said that some of the numbers had dropped. I was just was wondering if that coincided with that. So just a curiosity more than anything else, not that it is that, that big of a deal. But I mean, those kids will eventually not go to that school and those parents will probably still live in those homes. So you know, therein lies the challenge. But um, um, the um, I don't know when I was, there was something else. I had a note here, but I don't remember now what it meant. But I think whatever path we choose, it's already been a long day, right? Um, whatever path we choose, I just want to make sure we've thought forward as much as we can about what the potential unintended consequences or what, what, what shift is that going to cause for the next thing, right? So if we don't allow them to park here, where does that push them, right? Like what's the next most logical place? You know, it's like, I feel like we almost need to put our Lego people out there and, you know, figure out what is that? What is that next thing? Because then we're going to get the next thing that says, oh, this is now, this is a problem, right? It's, I've been dealing with this issue on this council for more than ten years and the whole, and it never, it always comes back. And I'm happy to deal with it. I'm, I'm a mom. I still have kids in school. Our principal sends a weekly email that says, you can't do this in pickup line. It's in there every stinking week. And I don't even do pickup unless my kids have to stay after school, right? Like, otherwise they're, they're bussing it. But it's, I know it's an issue and it was the thing I hated most as a parent is pickup, drop off was, hated it. And those are the challenges. You guys know when Clive changed their whole makeup there, how I was very adamant about having been in that pickup and drop off for forever, right? So I just want us to really think about if we're going to make changes, then let's be very diligent about making sure that we're not going to be back here within the next year trying to figure out how to address it again.
Has the school talked about like safety patrol or anything? I feel like the school needs to kind of, it, it shouldn't all be on the city's shoulders. I think that the school has to also step up and figure out how are they going to help? Because it, it really is a fifteen minute problem. So how can we resolve that? How can we work on this together and come up with something? Can they do safety patrol? You know, at, at Windsor, we, my daughter was in safety patrol. They got to wear those stupid belt things. Everybody thought they were so cool.
Clive does it too.
You know, I don't see that.
It was cool.
Yeah. I never got to wear one, so I'm not a cool kid.
I was hearing your voice. I can tell.
I'm jealous.
Jealous.
But my daughter did. So you know, I, I can live vicariously through her, right? Um, but you know, stepping up and, and kind of having some buy in on this. Um, my, my concern is that we put up these flashing lights and we have, we have parents that regularly run the stop sign. And I know by the look of their vehicle, who they are and where they're going. Cause I've seen it happen so many times and it's not just me, like everybody. Oh, there, there you go. I mean, the cops and I could talk about one person that continuously last year parked in the no parking almost every single day. And you know, I said, well, it's time to start writing tickets then, you know, because obviously us saying something verbally isn't helping to solve the problem. But you know, my concern is that if we put up these flashing lights, will people, people see it? Because I see flashing light, the crosswalks multiple different places where I don't think people understand at crosswalks, you have to stop and let the pedestrians and bikes cross. You know, that's, that's a big problem. I think these days we haven't educated people enough maybe about the crosswalks. Um, but I just don't want to give a, a false sense of security that because these lights are flashing, these people are going to actually stop and, and let people go by. That is my biggest concern, you know, by doing this. I think painting would be great. And maybe we start with painting and see if that helps reduce with a sign and we see if that reduces things. Um, but you know, I just, there's just concerns because I live this every single day.
Clive Elementary does a really nice job with their crossing. You know, I mean, they've got a crossing guard.
They also have a light.
They also have a light.
Right. It's a very different, Michael, when there's a stoplight.
I understand that. Yeah.
Do they have crossing guards?
Yeah.
At, at, at Kohl's they do? Cause I don't think I've ever
Just south of the school is what I was told.
In, in my
There's one teacher that does basically the driveway, the entrance into Kohl's, but there's no other
And that's kind of what I thought.
Might have changed then.
Within the last probably five years, I think it's changed. I think it's maybe cost, I, I don't know. But you know, my thought was, could we get a teacher? I know that they're overworked, over, understaffed, you know, but could there be a teacher? Could there be a sign up for parents? Could there be, you know, I think at one point in time, they actually did a sign up for parents that they tried to get pe, parents to come out to stand there and do the crosswalk and help. Um, you know, like buy in like that would, would go a lot further with the residents that are dealing with this also. And you know, maybe lessen the, the complaints or hey, we, we see that Kohl's is really stepping up and trying to help and be the good neighbor. Um, yeah, I, I don't know. I don't think there's a, a magic, anything to make this.
Right. I do think that when I, well, when, when Clive, and that's what I obviously know mine through, it would is that they um, there was um, PTO parents that helped with um, like pickup and drop off lanes. But then they, after not that, I don't want to say fizzled, but after it got challenging, now they just assign teachers, right? Like that's just part of their either morning or afternoon responsibility. Um, that they assign teachers and they all, and they rotate. So they know when they have the duty and they have to go and man it and you have to do it every, because every teacher has to do it. So it was just a something they had to do, especially when we went through, we got the update that they weren't. I don't even remember when that was here, when they did the rework or whatever, when they lost a couple of those, um, the guards, the crossing guards, so.
They have no four-way stops though, or they have no four-way intersections.
Right?
Uh, Clive, yeah. No.
This is
you know, turn, you can't turn different ways, different times. And, and I think for the most part, that's really at, I mean, that's adhered to, adhered to during that timeframe, during those timeframes. People are pretty, because otherwise they get, they get fight, people get feisty. And I think that there's an accountability when it comes like the parent doesn't, you don't want to be that parent that breaks the law in front of the teacher or in front of the other parent, right? Like, there's some social shaming to that, right? Like.
Yeah, I guess just because there's uh, some bad actors out there doesn't mean we should not take action um, to make, there's some, to make some, you know, safety improvements. I guess I just want to say that. Um, especially if it's, you know, a matter of signage, which is really costs little to nothing. I understand the, the flashing that, that may cost money, but um, you know, the uh, west-side signage that, that little to nothing and then painting, you know, that's um, little to nothing. So I understand there's obviously going to continue to be people who uh, just don't care when it comes to, you know, I'm dropping my kids off. I don't care about the rules.
Lauren and Andy messaged me saying they've got some points to share as well.
Okay. Um, well, we'll start with, uh, Lauren, go ahead.
Thanks. Uh, so Teresa, to your point about neighborhood school versus not, I, I checked my emails in twenty twenty-one, I applied for preschool for Andrew. Um, and he did not make the cut. So I don't know if the dis, if the boundary is shorter than, uh, than my edge of sixty-third street. Um, or if that change happened somewhere in that time, but that aligns with what you were thinking. Um, I, I appreciate that the principal is, is willing to include that in their weekly email. As someone who has helped plan events that are communicated through a weekly school email, boy, are those emails ignored easily uh, by busy parents. And so um, I also get really annoyed when the principal is at, at my child's school is addressing uh, certain behavior issues by sharing it with every single person clear, like every week, there's the same issue in the email and clearly there's a problem. And I think that problem should be discussed with those folks. So um, I would encourage the principal to, um, in addition to, I, I support, I, I like the idea of the signs and the painted crosswalk. I think um, uh, that will help in expanding the no parking zone. Um, but also encourage the principal to be part of the solution and out talking to folks because um, you know, uh, being called out by the principal like, hey, you probably saw in my email that you can't park here. Um, that might also uh, really play a, a key role in changing the behavior. Um, also, I, I heard feedback from one resident that they told somebody there's no parking there. And the person said, I'm not parked, I'm stopped. And so they felt that the no parking sign did not apply to them. And so I don't know if, if that's a custom sign thing of no parking or stopping. Um, but it seems that that's open to interpretation.
Apparently order signs that say no parking or stopping or standing.
I believe they do.
Okay, well.
I, I, I felt like that was, that was worthwhile feedback, but also I think um, identifying where the cars should line up, where they can park, and that should be part of that communication from the principal. Um, and um, you know, I'm, I'm a big fan of temporary yard signs, maybe a couple of yard signs from them that say Coles fam, you know, at the beginning of the school year, right? As, as parents are learning new routines, maybe schedule has changed for the parents and they're picking up for the first year or their child is uh, newly old enough to walk down the street instead of doing the, the um, the pickup zone. Um, educating parents on where they can park. And I think that's to your point, uh, Teresa, that um, thinking about the unintended consequences of, okay, so we moved the no parking to here, then where do they go next? And how do we make that manageable and safe and not a, a burden to parents, families or residents? That's all. Thank you.
Okay. I know you're gonna love this, absolutely love this, but I was talking to um, Ms. Murphy, who's here. And uh, she actually uh, saw the signs at Fall Festival and said, maybe that was something that we should put along there with like funny sayings or something, maybe at the start of school and then at the reminder period. Um, I'm sure that you would have a problem coming up with some creative um ways to uh, to do a, a sign, because I, you know, I know you love
Don't tempt me with the good time. I'll start working on my puns now.
Andy, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I think um, a lot of the discussion, the, the points uh, that I was going to make were made by various folks. Um, I think the concern from a signage and crosswalk standpoint is to keep those intersections open and kind of free-flowing for both pedestrian traffic and vehicle traffic. And if the unintended con, unintended tended consequences to it pushes folks into, deeper into the neighborhood or onto a side street. I think I would feel more comfortable with that versus the intersections getting bottled up um, and having that congestion like it is now. Some of the conversation that staff had with the school administration on the day two was to clearly communicate to parents and uh, the student population what the expectations are of how to navigate drop-off and pickup. I know they, I think they send some of the older kids or the older grades up to Washington and the younger grades stay closer to the main entrance of the building. So I think they kind of split it up that way. So I think it comes down to, we can do what we can do via signage. Whether it's clever or witty or just no stopping and standing or whatever it is, as well as painting the crosswalks in the street. Those are minimal expenses and minimal staff time from, from us as a department. Um, but we also are going to need the help and assistance of school administration to communicate what that plan looks like um, for their population. So um, but everything else um, was kind of already discussed. So thank you.
All right. So I'm not an educator, but I wonder if it would be possible, I mean, if we're asking the school to do something, would it be an opportunity to perhaps stagger the times that various grades are picked up or dropped off?
Teresa, didn't, did they talk about that? I know they talked about that at Windsor at one point and it just didn't work because you had siblings, you had, so it was like if, if you only had one child there, it would probably work out, but you having multiple kids there at various different levels.
It doesn't work.
Yeah.
Um, and that's why I like at, again, my point of reference Clive, because that's my experience, but um, they have different pickups at different locations. So it sounds like they're trying to do the same thing, which is if you're older, you go this way. If you're younger, you go this way. It sounds like they're trying to accomplish the same thing. They just have such a smaller space for which to accommodate it, I think is the challenge where Clive, you have three different doors where you can pick up, so.
I do see it, older kids, if they're walking by themselves, it's the older kids that come down my way. The younger kids are usually picked up by their parent and I don't, I don't ever see if they go all the way down or if they just pick them up prior to the intersection and then cross over, but um, I do see, you know, it's more, it's kind of either parents and kid or the, the older, because they go up until eighth grade there, I believe. So you know, you kind of have that, which is why Safety Patrol, you know, if you could get some of those kids to go out there, that, that would be a little bit, and that would be buying for them too, you know? Um, that's kind of why I thought about Safety Patrol or um, having them do something towards community service, you know, do you, however, however that works.
We can only make recommendations.
Is there any um, public comment?
Come on down.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Murphy. I live at six four twenty-five Forest Court. I've lived there for about eighteen years and I'm also a Coles parent. Um, not one that's blocking a driveway, but a Coles parent. And a frequent pedestrian on that sidewalk. Um, my kids have been at Coles. Um, I guess my oldest is in fourth grade, so quite some time and been on that sidewalk, which I really appreciate for a long time. Um, walking them to school or parking kind of by Susan's house and walking down um, as well. So you know, I think the most immediate concern is that intersection doing something to improve these visibility. I think there's a larger, there's many layers here, right? Which is kind of parents' parking behavior, maybe enforcement of that. Um, but then also just walkability in the city, right? Like, we don't have that many sidewalks. I know that's a touchy issue, but that is a, is a route to school, right? The sixty-fourth Street sidewalk is a route to school. And there are many Windsor Heights families that go to Coles as well, as well as folks that come in from, from the Des Moines Metro. Um, and besides that, I mean, that, that sidewalk is frequently used by lots of different folks. And we have uncontrolled intersections there, right? So there's the school issue that is really immediate. And then I think there's a larger issue of just as a city, how do we want to promote walkability? Right? On the sidewalks that we do have and the safety of those, those sidewalks. So um, I certainly support you know, the, the crosswalk. I, I'm not a traffic safety engineer. I don't know what the statistics are on how effective these signs are illuminated or not. Um, versus a four-way stop, which I think was suggested in a, a, um, email from another uh, parent. Um, but I think it's a real concern. I personally you know, grabbed kids out of the street when there's cars coming. So I think it's an immediate issue. I, I really feel um concerned about burdening the school with more asks. They're under-resourced. The budgets are being cut. I mean, there's, there's, there's certainly ways I think that they can be more proactive and involved in this conversation from a problem-solving perspective, but I think um, I, I would be, be hesitant to, to add more to their plate as well. Um, in a partnership conversation, I think is certainly something that they would come to the table for. I can't speak for them. Um, but I sent an email with, with some suggestions and with my personal experience and I'm happy to, to talk about that, or if we need to have maybe a, a meeting of minds with um, with all the interested parties um, to improve safety. But I appreciate your um long, long-range planning on this because I agree the solutions then created more problems, which create more problems. So thinking holistically about this while also addressing some real basic things that I can, think can be done pretty quickly, right? It's a warm day. We can get a sign in the ground, right? To at least restrict the parking and improve visibility while we're making some of these other decisions. So thank you for your time.
I also, yeah, when we talked, you talked about a school sign um, that you would know that there was a school.
Oh, yeah. I, I mean, turning on to sixty, from sixty-third Street onto Sunset going west, there's not signage where you would know there was a, a school, right? Um, and I don't know what the technical distance for a school zone is, but I would guess that would be it, right? So people driving um, east and west on Sunset would have no reason to know there's a school there. It's kind of tucked away, right? And so when people are cutting through Windsor Heights, it might be a bit of a surprise to come upon this. You know, this happening about three fifteen, three thirty every day. So I don't think signs are the, the total answer, but I think there's, there's some pieces that are part of, you know, I think larger federal programs about safe routes to school that we can look at for that specific sidewalk and that route. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a way that we can look at if that falls into a school zone? If we could put a sign up there if there's enough space in that area?
There's already a snow removal sign. You could probably just attach it to that. There you go.
Helps that problem.
And there's also the sign for the no parking standing or you could probably attach it to that. Well, I think there is a number of recommendations. Um, kind of a list, so you can pick, choose, take no action, but I'd ask you to take some because I don't think it's a lot to put a sign in the ground and paint a sidewalk or a road for that matter, I guess.
I guess what I would, I, I, I am for some you know, action and maybe we can get feedback for what the school is willing to do as well. Um, I appreciate the um, asking them more to do. I got, I got all of that, but I also understood, they have to be invested in the solution as well, because if they aren't, we're never going to make the improvement. And so um, like I said, sometimes it's shaming of the parents that will go a long ways. Um, I'm not going to lie, I've been shamed. So um, I'll, I'll be the first to admit that we'll correct behavior real quickly. Um, but I know that surprises nobody at this dais. Um, but so I, so if we could do that, but maybe if we can um, revisit this in like July or August again, as we go into the new school year, maybe we can find out how this worked, if it made a difference. And then if there's any adjustments we need to make or some things we might uh, be able to work on collaboratively with the school before school starts. Um, whether it's, you know, ensuring there's communication, Lawrence fantastic signage, you know, some of those sorts of things that, you know, maybe it's a great way to have some sort of a collaboration between the community and the school to show that we're, you know, we're all in this together kind of concept, right? Of um, we want it to be safe for our kiddos. We certainly don't want to invest our officer's time, you know, for an hours each day, you know, that, because we don't have a lot, right? And so even that is a significant cost and not that it's not worth it, don't take it the wrong way, right? But that, that's a significant cost and for our resources too, to have people over there managing traffic, right? So those are the, just the types of things, like if we can try to figure out how to be more solution-focused oriented to, to be pro, be proactive in this space, maybe that will make a difference. I don't know. I'm just.
As Teresa said, I mean, I asked Chief Roth to pull how often you know, our patrol officers were going around and it was a hundred and eighty-six times that they, or a hundred and eighty-six days since November of twenty twenty-three, maybe? I think is what that
Twenty twenty-three to current
To current time. And that doesn't include Clive, which had like a hundred and eighty-eight. So um, that's a, a significant amount of manpower um, by the PD. You know, and they've written two tickets um in the, the two years or since twenty twenty-one, I believe. Um, and just kind of looking, I pulled through the Iowa DOT to see how many accidents we had at that, at those locations. And the accidents that we do have are not either, either Saturdays, Sundays or not during the times that school is in session like two AM.
Is that where my car got totaled?
Uh, yeah, uh, yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah, that was one of those.
Bringing up bad things.
Sorry. No, I was at City, I was stopped at the stop light or the stop sign, the stop sign, and I got somebody not paying it, not distracted driving.
All right.
So I do think, you know, painting the, the side, just painting the crosswalk. Put some signage. I, I don't think you know, maybe right now I'm, I'm not maybe for the, the lights going. But at, at least a sign, the sign that says school is whatever that school one is.
Yeah. There's uh, well, there's five different ideas. There is the no stopping on the west side of um, Sunset.
Yes, I'm agreeing with that too.
We're, 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 we're shouldn't, shouldn't pre-vote, but uh, I'll just tell you, there's the
Well, but I mean, like, don't we have to like
Yes, yes, yes. Just remember this. There's the no stopping on the west side. There is painting Sunset. There's painting Colby. There's the crosswalk signage at Sunset. That could either be non-flashing or flashing or none at all. And then there is the school zone sign on Sunset, which was not suggested in the report. Um, what was suggested here today. Uh, here tonight. Um, and then Ms. Harms uh, suggested we revisit this uh, further in July or come back. And we also need to have further dialogue with uh, the school and probably also need to have further dialogue uh, with PD as far as enforcement. Perhaps stricter enforcement. So um, I guess there are five different elements of the actual you know, hard you know, hard, I guess, construction, we'll say.
I think, I mean, painting at sixty-fourth and Colby. I never run into issues, but I try not to walk at three thirty in the afternoon for obvious reasons. Um, but if we just start painting, I mean, we're already out there painting, so we might as well do both of those. Um, put up a sign if we're in the school zone, if that actually is part of the school zone, so that we're not putting up false information, although thing, then I agree to that. And I don't know what the school zone.
Chief, is a school zone by code or is it this kind of whatever we make it?
That's an engineering question, but I believe that there is some sort of, um, area around a school.
I think there's a definition.
Ask the whole city, the schools, but for, you know, enhanced penalties for certain crimes and, and stuff like that, that there is a, the, the primitive measure for that.
Chief, chief, that's correct. I mean, I would have to pull up the actual language of the Iowa code, but there is a way for the city to designate the actual school zone and it has those enhanced penalties, but it's, it's limited, we, eh, eh, in scope of how, how far of a range that can be.
Pulling it up, it just talks about Iowa code, three, two, one, dot, dot, two, four, nine. It's an area where cities and, and counties can establish zones and require the stopping of all motor vehicles indicated by movable stop signs placed at zone limits. I don't really know.
So I did a little, so most of the other school zone restrictions in code, um, are a thousand feet of a school building and its grounds. For what that's worth.
Get the, get the Google map out.
Should say, I don't know, distance at all.
About eight hundred feet from the school, seven, eight hundred feet.
By the hair on your chin.
So I would make a motion that we, um, move forward with the no-stoppings, the no-stopping, standing, sitting, talking, breathing on the west side of the street, the painting on sixty-fourth and Colby. Um, the non-flashing lights on, at the Sunset area, um, a school zone sign where appropriate. Um, revisiting over the summer months, the later summer months, and continue dialogue with the school and public, uh, uh, safety enforcement.
What about, what about painting Sunset?
Painting Sunset too, yes.
Second that.
Sixty-fourth, Colby and Sunset, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I had further discussion on that question.
I seconded that, by the way.
All right. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call.
Susan Skiers?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes. Let's keep a, let's keep a binder just with, uh, the.
How many times we pull school?
Yeah, with a timeline.
It would be a lot easier, so we're not.
We're starting to write things down now, so.
We didn't like minutes before on these things.
So that helps. All right. Seven B, consideration of land value for parkland dedication, cash in lieu. Adrian?
Yes, continuing the conversation from the last city council meeting, uh, as you recall, we have a parkland dedication uh, regulation now that you can either dedicate, uh, a portion of a property that is creating residence uh, in Windsor Heights for park use, uh, and that formula is based off of a, uh, anticipated one point five people uh, dwelling in any unit times, uh, the number of units times point, I believe it's zero, zero five to come up with the amount of acres that would be dedicated for the parkland use. In instances where a dedication of parkland is not appropriate or available, uh, a developer can offer cash in lieu of that parkland dedication. Uh, and so the project that we were discussing it on, uh, there is a parkland dedication option. Uh, however, it may not be highly utilized for parkland, so the proposed, uh, the cash in lieu option. Uh, Trey has done some research following that last city council meeting, um, relative to our peers across the metro and their valuations on a per acre basis for parkland dedication. Some of these metro cities follow the same sort of a formula that, uh, we currently have in place. Others just establish it through a committee of board or city council action. What we've done is try to come up with a simple way to annually determine that cash in lieu price going forward. And so when we come upon, come upon this annually or every five or six years, uh, there's some simple data that can be pulled. Uh, and that cash in lieu valuation then can be set for that year based off of where inflation and land values sit. Uh, a couple just pull out here, Ankeny, Johnston and Waquis, uh, were specifically used. They had a range, uh, in that valuation, but when Trey took the total land valuation in the city, divided it by the number of acres in that city, uh, and then divided it by, uh, a specific number, that helped him get to what that price per acre was. And that is the formula we're proposing to use here in Windsor Heights is take our total valuation, hundred and fifty-nine million dollars divided by hundred, six hundred and sixty acres, and then divide it by a coefficient of five, which is sort of right in the middle of where the other coefficients for Ankeny, Johnston and Waquis are. That arrives at a land value per acre of forty-eight thousand dollars. So for an example, then, on sixty-five hundred Hickman, that would put their cash in lieu payment at fourteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Now, this is substantially higher than, uh, the original proposed cash in lieu option, which was just under four thousand. Um, but it is at council's discretion on what you want to set that coefficient at, if you'd like to use that coefficient. Uh, but somewhere in that three point seven five to six radius is where we've got some good comps at, uh, and feel fairly comfortable that we've been in line with, uh, some of our peers in the metro. Johnston, for instance, uses a three point seven five coefficient, uh, but they have not changed that number for, I believe, more than a decade. Ankeny just updated theirs and their coefficient winds up being that five, uh, which is why that sort of is in the middle and a pretty recent number that Ankeny's come up with. So that's the proposal is going forward. We would, uh, set that coefficient uh, by council action and then staff would be able to easily calculate, uh, the cash in lieu option going forward. Whatever you'd like to set that at, three, four, five, six, or seven.
I appreciate you showing your work.
Yes, me too. I like to have consistency in a formula. That's important and this is good.
Uh, I have spoken with the property owner in question here, sixty-five hundred, taking the ark here this evening as well. In case you want to have them provide any comments, uh, that they have indicated that they would still probably move forward with the cash in lieu option as opposed to a, a land dedication under the formula, uh, prescribed here in the staff report. Although not to speak for them, they would prefer the lower number.
Well, I think that was probably obvious, but.
So I, um, just to refresh my memory here, so we proposed the first number, correct?
The ordinance that the city had passed last year did not prescribe a specific coefficient to come up with a land valuation. It just simply said it would rely on a county or city study. Uh, so Trey took a county number that was readily available. Um, I think the mayor came up with a slightly different value, uh, on that from the county side, but it did rely on, I think predominantly agricultural per acre land prices, which artificially decreased, uh, that price per acre relative to what a real cost per acre would be in Windsor Heights.
Right. I remember that. So, but my, my, so, but we are the ones who came up with the number. Trey came up with the number.
Trey came up with the number based off of what the city's ordinance.
Yep, fair, all, all fair. I just wanted to know where the number came from. Maybe, okay, so very helpful. Now good to have some sort of equation. So we, it's, we're all on the same page moving forward, right? Know what that is. So, um, I might propose in all fairness to that those folks and kind of what we know where we are today, um, and to maybe look at splitting the difference, if you will. So what if we went with like seventy-five hundred? That's like half of the number that otherwise might be. And then it's a little bit more than what they're, are going to be double what they pay, but not quadruple what they'll play.
I was kind of on that same page, even if we, between five and, and seventy-five hundred was my thought process as well, just because it's not really quite fair to them that they were expecting four thousand dollars and here we are at fourteen thousand dollars, almost fifteen.
Right.
You know, I, I agree with you on that.
But moving forward.
But moving forward.
Exactly. No, I'm, I'm, I would concur, yeah. But I, I think that we, our, our staff did not, our team didn't do their due diligence and so that's not fair to them.
Agreed. And can we go back? You said that the number that Trey used was actually agriculture versus city. Is that kind of how?
It's a, it's a countywide number. I think it's up for debate whether that was a strictly agricultural land valuation or if that would have encompassed more than just agricultural property. It's unclear to me. But it was not reflective of just Windsor Heights, uh, or all urban land valuation in the metro.
Is this more, uh, along the lines of what you saw? I, I can't remember what you came up with last. I mean, it was a few weeks ago.
Oh.
Was that?
Whatever, whatever Ms. Morrow emailed me.
I mean, you don't have to. I just didn't know if you.
I have it in front of me, I can tell you.
I'm just curious how we went above like eleven thousand dollars.
It was sixty-one thousand dollars.
Okay.
But.
Yeah.
The entire, that's countywide.
Right.
So.
So is the agreement at seventy-five?
If there's a motion for that.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
And then moving forward, that would be the.
The equation.
The equation, yeah.
Okay. Further discussion?
Do you guys want to set when we review it? Just so, I have a list during meetings, meetings of like when we do annual, like annual resolutions. Do you guys want to set, like, do you want that to be on the agenda, like beginning of the year, mid-year?
I think they're approving the formula, so that formula would be dependent on the information that's available through Polk County assessors. So we just use that formula with whatever the most recent data would be going forward.
And this formula hasn't changed at all since since like Ankeny, Johnston, they've been using the same formulas or is that something that we have to?
They don't necessarily use a coefficient to arrive, arrive at their price per acre. Uh, Ankeny, I believe, has a, a committee that just establishes that. Trey backed into that coefficient, uh, so that we could just use a formulaic way of doing it. It's, but we don't need to set a committee to put this together and determine a parkland dedication value because this is something we'll deal with infrequently, but cities that are more active development, um, will review this more frequently and have different mechanisms to determine it. We're backing into it through a coefficient that would change and adapt according to our valuation, land valuation within the city.
All right. Roll call.
Susan Skiers?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
All right, seven C, consideration of the water trail access professional services agreement.
Second.
All right, Nate White with Bull and Mink. Um, so what you guys have in front of you here is a proposal for, uh, design, uh, permitting and bidding of the water access, uh, along Walnut Creek at Colby Park. Pretty straightforward. Uh, the, uh, tasks that we have in there include topographic and boundary survey, uh, public engagement event, a limited public engagement event, uh, well and delineation floodplain modeling, and then the, the design and plan preparation. Um, and then obtaining those, those permits, uh, through the Army Corps as well as the DNR for floodplain permit and then, uh, uh, no rise permit as well. We have, uh, construction services, uh, we'll define later on once the contractor is secured and the schedule is defined on that. In total, I guess, um, some of this general information that you guys have in the staff report there from Adam, uh, the, including the engineering fees and a twenty percent contingency, we're currently looking at a range of two hundred and seven thousand to two hundred and fifty-four thousand and some change. Uh, this includes, uh, icon signage, uh, seating elements along the water access and then, uh, the sidewalk, uh, trail down to, uh, kind of a concrete landing area and then, uh, shoreline improvements as well. Uh, we're currently looking at, uh, this is highly dependent on the permitting process. This is something that, um, could really vary a little bit, but design schedule, we're looking at approximately a three-month process and then the, um, permitting uh, could take twelve weeks. Uh, that would be probably actually best case scenario on the permitting side. Uh, we would plan to submit documents for permitting at about a thirty percent plan stage, so hopefully some of that can happen concurrently. And then I think, uh, fall goes well, we could be bidding in August. Um, with potential, maybe the contractor could break some ground, maybe that, uh, in the fall of twenty-five, but um, would be better to assume that a spring of twenty-six construction to start.
Could you say fall of twenty twenty-five you could be starting?
Yeah, I mean.
That would be like the.
Potentially they could break ground, yes.
Just.
Not during fall festival is what she wants to say.
Right, yeah, sure.
That's what you need to.
Absolutely work around that, yeah. In fact, so part of the reason why I bring this up is because you may get some better pricing if you're not requiring a contractor to get started in the fall anyway. We said, you know, you, you guys can break ground in the spring, you know, they're lining up their work for the following.
Flexible.
Perfect.
How long will this take?
As far as construction goes or from beginning to end, um, good question. I really don't know for sure on that because as far as, uh, with some of the endangered species in there and potentially if we have to remove a tree or two, um, but, uh.
Did you say endangered species?
Say remove trees.
So most of them are already out of there, uh, the, the small stuff. Um, so I don't know that you will have that issue, but I would assume that they'd be able to build this thing in three to four months of active construction.
Most forested areas in the metro are habitat for, what is it? The long-eared brown bat.
Bat.
Um, and so there's specific timeframes that you can do tree removal.
Correct.
Uh, the other piece that Nate touched on is the icon signage. They're, uh, currently going through uh, design and branding process for all the icon sites. Uh, it'll have a similar look and feel to the central Iowa Trail signage, sort of these medallions, metallic medallions. They're very nice looking. They're very permanent and durable. Uh, they're also not cheap, so they've got a few different options as far as whether you want to have regional maps on there, uh, or something a little more consolidated, but depending what council wants to do on that, that will swing the price, uh, by potentially ten or more thousand dollars.
Will this shut down, will this work, shut down the bike path at all?
They would probably have a closure briefly. I would imagine that they'd be able to get a alternate route around it, yeah, without too much effort. They're really just, they would just be connecting the trail up there and then, um, once they get, I mean, they're gonna have to do some staging. I'm assuming they're gonna be staging probably at the end of the parking lot there, so they'll be crossing the trail time and again to get stuff, get materials down there.
The one, one qualifier I'd put on that is we do have an outstanding TAP grant for resurfacing a portion of that trail directly in front of the water trail access. Ideally, if we got that, we can sync those projects up and that would involve a longer trail closure.
You can also potentially bring it up and bring it on around and through the park. So I think there's some.
There's alternatives.
Yeah, I think that we could. Get a man to see the playground. What'd you say?
Lauren signs.
Yeah.
I'll work on some more puns.
I'd hate to have to put PD out there on patrol to get tickets, but whatever it takes, right, chief?
Are there, uh, are there the question?
Move to approve, is that what you want?
Yeah, we already had.
Okay, great. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right.
Okay, great. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, super.
Motion to close.
Answer is yes.
Okay, roll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes, again.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Lisa Harms?
Yes.
All right, uh, seven D, discussion on new resident welcome packet distribution. AJ?
Uh, yes, over the last month or so, we've had some good conversations with the chamber and the communications committee. Uh, last year is a reminder, the city partnered up with the chamber for distribution of new resident packets. Uh, there's kind of a long history, I think, with these packets. Historically, they were done solely through the city. Um, the chamber has been doing for the last year an overprint of an existing publication that they put out. It has an insert of four pages with some more specific City of Windsor Heights items. And then through the TRC program with the chamber, uh, chamber businesses can include and pay for an insert to be included in that as well. Uh, the last nine, ten months, uh, they've been hand delivered uh, by uh, council member Libby. And as we are ready to uh, bring out the new packet here in twenty twenty five, uh, we just wanted to get some clarity on how we want to move forward with this program. Uh, I think subsequent from the communications committee meeting, uh, it looks like everybody's on the same page, but we want to make sure that council's on board with this as well. The chamber will do their overprints. They will mail out that packet and any inserts that are done through the TRC. Staff will provide the uh, new resident mailing addresses, uh, which we received from Des Moines Water Works. Uh, and staff's currently working on providing some updated information for uh, the city four-page insert in there as well. So uh, that's our current plans based off of the last couple of months uh, conversations. But happy to take any additional feedback. Otherwise, that'll be our direction going forward.
Do we put in like the magnet for what, for metro waste, anything like that in there or?
Last year, the city included the magnet, uh, ink pins, City of Windsor Heights ink pins. Uh, these little flower packets that were also branded by the city. I believe there's a special events insert uh, that Lauren had helped put together that was in there. And a trail map of the region. Uh, with the plan going forward to mail it, uh, it's possible we may not include some of those heavier objects like the magnet. Um, hand delivering obviously doesn't change that price point. Mailing it would. I don't know if we have a total weight on this or what the cost would be of that, but I will make them available to the chamber if they would like to include any or all of these materials.
Or I guess if, if we can't, can we put like a little note in there that says CSX? Yeah, stop by for the what your, the magnet or you know, whatever else because I know we actually have been using that magnet. Check on recycling days because I can't rely on the people putting out their recycling anymore.
As you watch the neighbors, right?
Yeah, I mean, I stick my head out and
but there is this rely on texting you.
That's it. But if I don't know.
So people come turn by to get themselves a little goody bag or whatever from the city. Is that where your thinking is?
Yeah, something like that.
Should be easy incorporate.
And the insert information? Or in the chamber's letter?
I think it would go in the insert packet, right?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, either maybe in the mayor's letter or someplace in our four-page insert.
Well, yeah, they gotta read the mayor's letter first.
The most important part of the packet.
Do we know what um, flyers were handed out this last year? Can this, I asked Tiffany today because I was in at the chamber. And I think we have one, two, three, four, five, six so far that have signed up uh, to put flyers in. Do we know what we had last year? Nobody, I mean, I could go back to the TRC, but.
Oh, Tiffany had given us a list. I want to say there were six or seven businesses, uh, some in Windsor Heights, some adjoining municipalities.
I like the idea of including that they could stop into City Hall to pick up some city swag, you know, the pin, the magnet, um, what, whatever else. Because um, there's, I, I'll, I'll, I'll be honest, there was, I didn't have a reason to come to City Hall for a long time. Um, because you know, like the paying for my uh, yard waste bin that was online, right? And giving uh, resident, new residents a chance to interact with our city staff. I think that would be a great first impression for them.
Maybe even put in stuff about our new battery program. Make sure that, you know, all of our junk days or whatever, spring cleaning, whatever.
And the uh, picking up or bringing in your fluorescent light bulbs.
Yep, that too.
And the cardboard recycling.
Especially since if you're moving in, you probably have a bunch of boxes.
Yeah.
Well. Yeah, definitely all the extras um, here. And Hy-Vee has now the prescription drop. I mean, that's, that's been there too. That's another great resource if you're not.
Cause I don't think the PD is doing that anymore. So like the drop offs here. So that would be something for people to know, exist.
One other one we were looking at is uh, Justin has included in our Forest Court resurfacing, the option to use recycled material in that. And the company uh, that helps provide that material lets cities collect plastic bags like a Hy-Vee bag. And then they'll incorporate that into the final material delivered for the project. So uh, we might be collecting garbage bags that become parts of our road as well. So all sorts of recycling that you can do in City Hall.
Don't forget you can use metro waste for the shingles that they have, that they have uh, torn down and used for all of their paving needs. They have, some of the cities have now put that into their regulations that they use shingles, whatever term they, I don't know what it means.
A grind of, yeah.
So the, the gist of this is just that we are, that the chamber is going to take this over and then.
Basically, it's going to become a chamber initiative uh, with some limited support from the city in providing uh, some information on our insert and then the mailing lists uh, for where they can go out to.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Eight A. Reports. Uh, Chief Roth and I attended the mayor's meeting, which was at Mallow. And we heard from the uh, heard from Broadlawn's about the Crisis Observation Center. And uh, St. Vincent de Paul about the Sobering Center, uh, which are both at the Polk County Life Services Center. It's a lot of centers in there. Um, I also heard from Mayor Trimble and Mayor is Mayor Andwig about um, Senate File three oh three. Uh, there was a lengthy procedural discussion about this file, which I had no clear understanding of. But this is the uh, fireworks, consumer fireworks bill. Ms. Harms?
Yeah. Oh, no, I've been on, I'm very much on, I'm actually registered opposed to it on behalf of clients.
Um, which my understanding is that uh, it will allow the lighting of fireworks July third, fourth and fifth, and the thirty first and of the year, and we have no say.
That is correct.
And uh, banning that. And apparently that's gonna pass.
What I would tell you right now is that there is uh, counter amendments to that, that piece of legislation right now. And um, and there are bills in both chambers that do similar things. They are not companions, I believe, at this moment. Um, but there's conflicting amendments. One amendment would open it up so you can do it anytime. One opens it up so you can do it on a handful of times. I would let you know that the public safety community has begun to get engaged. I think people thought it was a, this is my read on it, that, that they thought it was just another introduction of a fireworks bill that wasn't gonna go anywhere. It started to get some steam. Now it was on an agenda to, it was on the Senate floor to be brought up and it was deferred and it has not come up since. So it was deferred a couple of weeks ago and here we sit.
Okay.
So I would encourage you to reach out to your members.
On to you.
So, okay, my turn? Okay, all right. Well, I make, put me on the hot seat. Um, so um, the legislature has been busy and uh, attended MAC with, with the mayor um, last week on Tuesday. Um, we spent um, a lion's share time talking about the property tax bill in particular. Um, the implications of that and how we um, respond as a metro. Um, Courtney gave an update and more of what the communications group um, was doing. I've seen a little bit more um, with that. Um, and then we also got an update from the shelter um, services. So the Central Iowa Shelter, we are not one of the participating or contributing communities. Um, I think there were three cities that are uh, West Des Moines, Des Moines, and maybe somewhere else that they will restrict or take um, folks from, from those communities. Um, I think what I've seen in our community more um, is that now that Des Moines has changed their laws, that the um, the other communities are starting to see a little bit more of an influx of um, homeless folks. And so um, but the biggest issues being their, their challenges to be able to accommodate based on increasing costs for all of the issues and challenges um, that we all are, you know, all facing with administrative costs and inflation and all of those things. What does it cost to care for those folks? But also the increase in numbers, they see it from folks being, you know, out of the area, what have you. Um, they, they shared an example of, you know, doing, um, they're, they're working with other communities throughout the state um, on how they might be able to help address the homelessness in their local communities as opposed to sending them to Des Moines. Um, so I thought it was a good conversation. Like, I don't know if you have any other thoughts or, or feedback on that. But I know it's something that I think we've started to see and I don't know if the chief has other, you know, or feedback on that. But I feel like we're starting to see a lot more of that in our community than we have in the past. Um, and so just, you know, food for a thought on how we might want to approach that or be part of more of a metro-wide conversation on how we're going to help mitigate that or address those issues in our, and in Windsor Heights. I know, I don't think, I think as I think about how long I've been here in this city since nineteen ninety nine, so twenty five years, twenty six years, that how that has grown, you know, and even more recently over the course of the last couple of years, so. Um, that's my update, I think. If you have any questions on legislative issues, please just outreach out to me. Happy to answer them. Hans Free is on the um, on the Senate debate calendar for tomorrow. So.
Ms. Campbell?
I attended DART meeting. Um, I think it was two weeks ago now? Does that sound right? Last week, maybe? I don't know. I attended DART on uh, on, on that Tuesday, so the day before Ash Wednesday, whenever that was. Um, uh, we will um, be presented with uh, some of the options that are under consideration in the reimagined DART. So looking at increasing ridership and increasing reach and how does our community or how does our council feel about the two options? And uh, we'll want to provide feedback to Joseph so that he can share that with um, uh, the DART Commission as well. And um, on a personal note, I uh, today was back at Maggie Daley Park in Chicago. And I was there right before our Colby Park redesign project kicked off and was just in awe of this gorgeous park. And the first thing I said to Nate, I don't think he's still there. I don't see the back of his head anymore. But the first thing I said to Nate was, I just got back from the coolest park ever. Good luck designing anything that will like remotely impress me. And I got to last week, spend two different evenings down at our gorgeous um, new Colby Park. And it was so wonderful to see so many families, so many kids, so many people out enjoying um, our new park. And um, uh, you know, the, I got rave reviews that there are flush bathrooms uh, nearby and how accessible it is. And so um, it was really nice to be back at uh, the, the first park that impressed me and going, ah, this isn't that great. Um, and considering that we're competing with the city of Chicago, I think that's, that's pretty awesome. That's all for me.
Libby?
We had a, yeah, a, a really positive um, Economic Development Committee meeting recently. A good conversation about um, uh, communications. And we've uh, just set the next podcast for Windsor Heights uh, to talk about Colby Park. And which will feature uh, AJ and Jason, as a matter of fact, who's gonna bring some history to this. And I think we've got it scheduled to do the second or third day of, of April to sit down and do that. That piece. And I, and I think that once Seventy-third Street reconstruction was not a very sexy topic uh, to kick things off with. But I think once the people get used to having the fact that there is more information out there, that we'll see our numbers increase. But I appreciate the fact that it, it hit social media here. And uh, and perhaps in the next newsletter, we can also do a QR code that'll hook us up to that on the website.
That's all I have, sir. Jones?
Nothing for me.
Ms. Skiers?
Um, let's see. Just a brief update. Uh, two Wednesdays ago, I attended Metro Waste Executive Meeting. Um, and then followed that by the Metro Waste Meeting this past Wednesday. Um, as Teresa can probably say, Metro Waste is actively working on the bill related to the extended producer responsibility. I SF something, I don't remember what the, what the number was. But uh, during our discussion that evening, we spent significant time talking about this bill and provided direction as a board on how we would like Metro Waste to engage uh, with this bill. Uh, additionally, Metro Waste held a meeting with AJ about placing a battery recycling container at City Hall, uh, which is crucial to help uh, prevent lithium batteries from ending up in the land, landfill. These batteries are suspected to have caused two recent fires. Over a million dollars in damage on one of the fires, uh, making this initiative a very high priority. It was great to attend Wake Up Windsor Heights event at Premium Solutions where we had a full house. It was wonderful to see so many local Windsor Heights businesses represented. Special thank you to AJ for attending and promoting the city during the event. Uh, looking ahead, the Masonic Lodge on Seventy, Sixty-ninth Street is hosting their monthly breakfast this Saturday from seven to eight, or seven to ten AM. It's a free will offering uh, with hundred percent of the donations going to the free store. Our special events committee meeting will be held on April fourth. We'll combine both the March and April meetings together. I've been busy uh, planning for the upcoming events such as Earth Day, Movies in the Park, Touch a Truck. A big thank you to everyone who has helped make connections to support these events. Uh, additionally, just because I like to have things on my calendar ahead of time, the foundation will be presenting their Knights in the Heights concert lineup party, for lack of a better term, because I can't remember what they called it. Um, on April fourth at the Community Event Center, they'll be accepting free will donations to help offset the cost of the concert series. Then don't forget, um, Wake Up Windsor Heights will take place on April tenth here with the city hosting the event. This isn't on the paper handout, so I wanted to make sure it's on everybody's radar. And make sure to RSVP as there's limited spots available. And then the new fire truck looks great. I was able to look at it today and I'm excited for the public to see this new apparatus. Then lastly, I want to thank um, the Public Works Team for their diligent work in cleaning up the streets during the recent storm, the recent snowstorm and those horrible winds. Here's hoping that we don't see any snow on Wednesday. Um, I don't know though, because the forecast changes every time I turn on the TV. So whatever happens, happens. But wishing y'all a, a good week ahead and happy Saint Patrick's Day to all who celebrate.
That's right. AJ, anything for you?
Just Seventy-third Street is uh, close to through traffic again. Uh, so people are adjusting their driving habits accordingly. That usually takes a few days for people to get that message, even though the boards have been out there for a while. So adjust your driving habits accordingly.
Okay, I will admit I was one. I forgot about Seventy-third Street today. In my defense, it was eight o'clock in the morning and I drove, I was like, oh, really? It's, hmm, so.
Motion to adjourn.
A little sec.
Roll call.
Susan Skiers?
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
Thank you.